Yes, yes, are we good? Okay, thanks guys. We're now convening this oversight hearing of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Public notice is we're sent out to the media in compliance with the open government law and we'll go ahead and begin the meeting this morning at ten oh five. Just a couple of things we're gonna be going over with the agency. Our collections, updates on the business license renewal process, some clarification on the property seizure process, and an update on the gaming tax collections and their remittances to GMH. And lastly, we'll be talking about customer service and an update on the online services, including the online payment and online car registration. This morning, we have Director John Camacho and Deputy Director Maria Benito, thank you so much for joining us. Thank you very much. Happy belated liberation.
Happy belated to you also.
We do have with us here a copy of the report for July twenty fourteen from the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I just wanna kinda go over it with, with the two of you. As of July eighteenth twenty fourteen, we had a individual income tax receivable balance of thirty million fifty-nine thousand. We had a withholding tax receivable balance of eighteen million eight hundred thousand. A corporate income tax receivable balance of twenty-seven million four hundred thousand. A business privileged tax receivable balance of thirty-four million. And a total receivable balance inventory of a hundred and eleven million. Just to clarify from the information that we had in our last oversight hearing back in February, the receivable balance was at a hundred and two million, it is now up to one hundred and eleven. But I do want to preface that with the fact that because we've just completed the income tax filing cycle, that has a tendency to bump up the receivables and just to point that out here. We do have a one million dollar increase on the individual income tax as opposed to February. We have a one million dollar increase on the withholding tax as compared to February. We have a one million dollar increase, I'm sorry, we have a one million dollar decrease in the business privileged tax and a four million dollar decrease in the corporate income tax. I'm sorry, a four million dollar increase on the corporate income tax and a one million dollar increase on the business privileged tax. So across all categories, we do have a slight increase at the end of the tax, income tax cycle. From one hundred and two million to one hundred and eleven million, but I wanted to highlight the year-over-year because that will give us a more accurate seasonal snapshot. And that was one of the reasons why we kinda began these oversight hearings last year and maintained a pretty consistent schedule was that we can show these baselines and show the improvements. And I wanted to thank the Department of Revenue and Taxation once again because in July of twenty thirteen, the receivable balance in individual income tax, withholding tax, corporate income tax, and business privileged tax was one hundred and seventeen million a year ago. And this year, it is down to one hundred and eleven million. So we're looking at a six million dollar improvement, that's six million dollars more in receivables that have been either collected or are no longer outstanding. And that is now hopefully flowing through our, our government coffers and being put through people. Did you have, did you, you do have anything that you'd like to clarify with respect to where the collection numbers are?
Well, I guess in relation to the agenda today in regards to, to the, the business license renewal, we wanted to address that every year we, we wanna try and capture all those receivables that are related to the businesses and make sure that we collect from them and at the same time, secure any payment arrangement or what we call installment agreements every time they come in to renew their licenses. So with that regards, I just wanna report that we do this every year and for this year, we, we ran a report and we, we saw that we needed a clearance of four thousand six hundred and forty licenses to be cleared for collection this year. And at the end of, I think, just yesterday or the other day, we cleared of that four thousand, six hundred and forty, four thousand eighty-nine licenses that we cleared, which gives us a balance of about five hundred and fifty-one licenses to be cleared this, this renewal period for this current year. It's, it's a clearance rate that we're looking at about eighty-eight percent that were cleared for these businesses that, that came in. As a result of that, basically, we, we actually closed two hundred and forty-five accounts or taxpayers with roughly about one point seven million dollars that we collected during the month of July. And we secured a hundred and nineteen IAs installment agreements during the month, renewal month, which we secured or collected roughly about four, four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars and secured a seven point five million dollar receivables for those installment agreements. So pretty much this, this year on the business license renewal, we, we pretty much ensure that businesses do clear with collection brands if they do owe. And like I said earlier, two hundred and forty-five of them came in and paid, paid off their, their account. So that's a great improvement. We secured a hundred and nineteen for IAs. And, and what we're looking at right now, we go back to the business licenses, there are about five hundred and fifty-one licenses that needs to be cleared. So we don't know whether these people decided to quit their business or seize their business or what. So we're, we're gonna actually write to them and let them know that you have not come in to renew all these licenses. So keep in mind that some of these licenses are owned by one taxpayer of, I think some of them, a hundred license for one taxpayer, fifty license, and I think some of them like five hundred license depending on what type of license are issued. So that's why the numbers are pretty high, but as far as taxpayers, we're only looking about, I think, fifteen hundred taxpayers. So that's something that we, we are looking moving forward.
So we have five hundred and fifty-one pending clearance, those have not been reissued?
Those, those licenses were not, are not, it's still pending and, and we're, I guess by, by August, we're giving it time for these people to come in, these businesses actually to come in and renew. So by maybe first week of August, we wanna make sure that there's, those, all those payments, if they did it off, I don't know what, are, are secured or the interface actually happened. And then we, we would write a letter, a, a letter to all these businesses that don't have license. And from there, you know, we would do some regulatory action in, in the future if they, if we know that we have our people go out and see if they continue to, to operate business with our license, then we will have our, our people go out there and, and do something about it.
Okay, good, and yeah, yeah, sure, but give me one second. So of the five hundred and fifty-one that are pending clearance, we have not issued any licenses to any businesses that have not paid or, or have not signed up for an installment agreement?
That, that is correct. These, these are, are, before our licenses renewed, they have to clear. And if that clearance don't clear, get cleared by, by the collection supervisor or any, any person that is responsible to clear that license, it would never, it would never be reissued.
So these five hundred and fifty-one are right now technically operating with expired licenses? Or not, or not operating at all? They're not, they've walked away from their business and they just, the license is still just floating out there, expired?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
You made a comment that really concerned me. You said, there may have been like one taxpayer that had one hundred licenses?
Yes. In other words, if a taxpayer owns so many properties and is leasing all those properties and every property is a single, single property, you need to get a license for each property.
And how much is a, how much?
Or like a vending machine or, or so forth.
And how much is a license like for a property?
If you're renting it or leasing it, I think a, a single dwelling is ten dollars.
And each one of those licenses under the current tax exemption for grocery receipts? If they earned less, if they own, charge three thousand a month and they only made thirty-six thousand this year, they would pay no grocery seed tax, right?
If, if the person is, is so proprietor and that's the only business he owns, yes. But if the person owns all these properties and he, he receives all this income, then he's not subject to the, the Dave Santos exemption because he's gonna exceed the fifty thousand. So you, you remember the, the Dave Santos only allows the first fifty thousand, excuse me, the first forty thousand, but the threshold is fifty thousand tests for the following year, so.
For, for the taxpayer or for that licensee?
For the, the owner of the, the, the property that's, that's, that's leasing it or renting it out.
But if it's a corp, if the corporation?
If the corporation owns all this property then?
No, if it, if it's, if they're individually owned, could he get away with owning a hundred pieces of property, running it up at thirty-six thousand a year?
No, no, because he has to report all the properties under his name.
Securiting.
Yes, securing, yes.
And just to clarify for the vice speaker also, I do have a couple rental properties, but they're all under one GRT.
Yes.
And so I do have two business licenses, but under one GRT account.
Yeah.
And so they all, they all cumulatively account for the Dave Santos threshold. But there's two separate licenses for two separate pieces of property, but they, the, the total aggregate revenue counts under one GRT license. One GRT account number.
Because you have one taxpayer.
That's right, that's right. I'm glad that the vice speaker did bring up the Dave Santos question and the forty to fifty thousand dollar test because I got some concern calls. My understanding is the, the way the GRT threshold works is it resets every year, is that? But from, but from what other taxpayers are telling me, they said, once they cross that forty or fifty thousand dollar mark, no matter what their income is next year, they're already having to be, they're already getting assessed GRT. So I would like for you guys to clarify that.
The, the income test is, is on a yearly basis. If you, if you notice that normally taxpayers on a calendar year basis. So in other words, it, one taxpayer can be, take advantage of the Dave Santos in one year, but the next year you have to run that test again. So in, in other words, if this year your last, your, your gross income test is less than fifty thousand, let's say for rental, we're talking about rental, then you'll be entitled to the first forty. But let's say this year, which is the current year, you exceed that fifty thousand, then next year in two thousand and fifteen, you're not entitled to that exemption because you, you exceeded the fifty thousand in two thousand and fourteen.
See, and that's where there's some concern from the taxpayer because like one of the, one of the real concerns was there's an individual owns a business and they got a, a really nice contract for one year. And it bumped them of course above the Dave Santos threshold, but that contract was only for one year. And their, their revenue went below the threshold for the years thereafter. And their question to me, which was, I, I thought a very valid question, was shouldn't I be able to take advantage of that exemption in a new tax year?
Yes, if that, if, if the test, you always look at the, the, the previous years as your test. So like if last year it was, for example, below fifty thousand for one activity, we're talking about one activity. If, if it's below fifty thousand, then you're entitled to that activity which is rental. Remember there are other activities. So if that's the only business that you have, then you're entitled. But let's say this year, you, you exempt the first forty, but somehow your, your rental went up this year, somewhere along the line, let's say in June you, you increase or your rental, somehow in two thousand and fourteen, you went below, went above the fifty thousand. So next year in two thousand and fifteen, you're no longer available to, to take the exemption for this, this exemption for the rental because your, your last year was more than, more than fifty thousand.
See, yeah, that's, that's, I think we need to clarify that a little bit. Because my understanding of it is so long as, if you, here's your threshold, forty thousand. If you exceed forty, you pay GRT within that calendar year.
Yes, yes.
Within that calendar year.
Yes.
But once you hit January, it's a new calendar year and you gotta exceed forty all over again. But what you're saying is if I hit forty in June of last year, come January of this year, I can't claim Dave Santos?
Because this year you went, you went below fif, below, I mean above fifty. So let's say, let's say in, in two thousand and fourteen, your total rental income, for example, is fifty-two thousand, in which that you exceeded the forty, let's say somewhere in, in April or May, or let's say June. But you started paying because somehow your rental went up sometimes this year. So that if you exceed the fifty thousand test this year, then next year you're no longer available for that credit, I mean for that Dave Santos. Because in two thousand and fifteen, you're gonna look back at fourteen, how much did I make for this activity on the rental? Oh, I made fifty-two thousand, so for this year now, I'm not available to take the Dave Santos.
Okay, I think we need to meet about this and clarify.
Because that's, that's, i- if you look at the, the statute, you always look at the, the previous year.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, we'll need to, we, we definitely need to clarify this. Because I don't want people to be paying, paying GRT on below threshold amounts because they just exceeded the threshold the previous year. Because that could have been a one-time, you know, that could have been a one-time event, you know.
But this way, if you're, you're a new business and you come in, this is the first time you, you open your businesses here, what was your rental last year?
Well, let's, let's look at a different business from rentals. Let's look at, let's look at a service contractor, for example. Let's say I'm a plumber and, you know, last year I had these four huge projects and I went up to two hundred thousand. But next, but this year, I'm just doing leaky faucets and I'm only making twenty thousand. But I'm having to pay GRT on that twenty thousand because last year I exceeded it?
That's, that's what the law says.
Yeah, we need to really, we need to really clarify that because I don't think that's, that's a spirit of the Dave Santos amendment.
But you look at this way, you continue your business next year, since you did not exceed fifty thousand on that contract this year, now you're, you're entitled to the first forty and fifteen.
That's what, that's what I'm trying to clarify. Sure, vice speaker Cruz.
My concern is the opposite, not so much the taxpayer, I'm concerned about revenue to the government. Is it possible for someone to be able to register, to own a hundred units of apartments, some, you know, different parts of the island, or a hundred pieces of property around the island? Incorporate each one of them separately, not under his or her name? And get the Dave Santos exemption on each one of those?
The, the, the law basically defines a taxpayer. So a taxpayer is one. So if you own all these taxpayers and you report all this income in your GRT, then that's, that's the, the, the test that you need to do.
I understand, but I, I'm saying that these are corporations.
Okay.
Could they have a hundred corporations, but doesn't, doesn't show your name? I mean, you know, we can do all these LLCs and LLPs, which is the thing, reason why I was concerned. So you have all of these LLCs, LLPs that are out there and there's a hundred of them.
Okay.
And it doesn't say it's only, they're owned by.
How, how is a hundred reporting their GRT?
Each, one of them are, are reporting them separately. I may report it on my income tax that my corporations made, you know, four million. But individually, the hundred corporations that, that, that I own are, are, are filing separate and have separate licenses, could each one of them take advantage of the Dave Santos?
I, I have to look into that because the, the, the statute basically mentions that the word taxpayer. So if, if, if you're telling me that each corporation has, is different from all, all the other corporations, then it's a possibility, yes, because it's his taxpayers.
I know, I, that's why I'm asking the question because I, I've spoken to, I know some of the agents up there. And they're saying that they're, that part of the problem is that people are doing this where they're incorporating separately, maybe not a hundred, but they may have ten, ten different units that they're renting. And each one has, you know, a different name. You don't go and look and see who owns each of them?
And, and what I'm saying is the, the statute talks about taxpayer, taxpayer is a corporation. So if you're saying that a hundred corporations were incorporated on at our department, so they're different, different taxpayers. It's probably a possibility that maybe they, they will probably, but we need to look at the source of who are these taxpayers to see, are they actually doing this to evade tax or something that we?
I know, but do you have the capability, being able to go, go beneath that and say, what, what if I incorporate an LLP? And this, this LLP incorporated ten different LLCs and there's no name on it? It just says B, J, C, F on each one of these. So can, can you, can you follow that down? That's, you can?
No, what I was gonna say was we will look into it, there's a possibility that that already exists. So maybe we have to revisit the law to make it stricter. And, and if you own the property, then you must just maintain that instead of creating those other corporations.
No, but the corporation owns that property.
Right.
I sold the property to this corporation.
Yes.
And so it's in that corporation's name. I may, I, in my, in my income tax, report that my hundred corporations, it made four million. Like, but my individual corporations only made thirty-six thousand?
The, the. And that avoids the?
That's what I'm asking, is, is that possible?
In, in other words, what I'm trying to say is the statute explains, defines a taxpayer. So if you're saying that?
And the taxpayer can't be a corporation?
Articles of corporation of a hundred, articles corporate that established in, in, in revenue taxation. And this corporation eats as their own shareholders separately. And maybe there's some link of some, you know, one person owning certain percentage of it. That we have to look into, but it's possible that they can take it if, if they're legit corporation, is what I'm saying. But as far as like evading taxes is something, something that we have to look at. Are you doing it purposely to escape taxes?
I, I may be escaping my GRT, but I'm paying, no, but I'm paying my, my income tax.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, but on the income tax, we're gonna see a hundred corporate eleven twenty file because everybody, every corporate is established, that's what they're telling me. So there's one hundred corporations that establish, that's gonna have, we're gonna see a hundred different corporations filed with the Department of Revenue, Department of Revenue and Taxation unless they fall under the, the consolidated rules where they can file a consolidated.
And that was my concern with LLCs and LLPs when I was trying to get the legislation through for the attorneys. Many of them are part of LLCs and LLPs and trying to follow whether or not they paid their taxes and whether or not there's some issues and they happen. Are, you know, are you guys capable of being able to investigate that? I mean, I couldn't get you guys to find the thirty-six hotels.
We, we are looking at those and you talked about, about the hotel occupancy act. But, but let me just say one thing about the, the Dave Santos act, it's, it's really, really complicated. But all in all, you have to realize that it's the aggregate that, that you're, you're, you're looking at. So, so a, a lot of businesses have more than one, they have one for service, one for, for rental, one for real property, one for retail, because they're all even commissions. So what, what the law says is, is you're only limited to the first, first fifty thousand. So that's, that's another thing that we, we, we are, are enforcing because you cannot, a taxpayer cannot get more than fifty thousand. And that is the reason why we did that because we don't wanna kinda like reduce the base, the tax base for, 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 for all the businesses.
I mean, that's my concern.
Yeah, that's, that's, we're doing that already because only one, a person can only take fifty thousand dollars in a year. Which what I'm trying to say is that if you have two businesses or three businesses, it, it's what they call the first fifty thousand. So you, just because you, you qualify for one business and another business and another business for the Dave Santos, we will not allow you a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of exemptions, we will only allow you fifty. Because that's the aggregate. So we did that as a safety valve when we, when we created this law.
And then also too, there, there, there's certain layerings that occur that kinda prevent the, the creation of new entities to avoid GRT. GRT is only four percent. But if I were to go and create a corporation for my two rental properties, I'll pay corporate income tax, that's already at a flat thirty-five, you know? While my tax rate might be much lower than thirty-five percent. So by creating new entities just to avoid four percent of GRT, you're actually exposing them immediately to a much higher tax bracket than if they were perhaps consolidated. So there's, there's reasons why some may create new entities. But for the most part, it's very unlikely that they would want to expose all of those new entities to a higher federal tax bracket by creating corporations for each of these individual operating units. Unless, you know, their, their, their aggregate business line is, is very, very high, but then it becomes an accounting nightmare that probably end up paying more for accountants and bookkeepers than they would in GRT at four percent. So I mean, vice speaker raises a good point, maybe I can take another look at that and let the committee know if there's any kind of, you know, red flagged issues of multiple entities under a single umbrella that are, that are really, really glaringly, you know, questionable as far as their GRT goes. I know that there are several conglomerates, you know, big companies, multiple business units. So maybe you guys can take a look at that and see if there's any GRT red flags that might be going up on those. But, but for the most part, I would assume that it would be very, it would be very cumbersome and it would be almost, yeah, to do it, to do that.
I think they, they, you know, it's a separate legal entity, so yes, can they do that? Yes.
They can.
Now is that a loophole? That's what we have to look into, but again, you know, is it a financially sound move to create all those corporations? So each?
And then, and then the, and then the real question of exactly what defines the loophole, I mean, they may be escaping GRT, but if they're paying these accountants and the accountants are paying a thirty-five percent income tax bracket on that income from the, from the accounting services, then what we may have lost in the four percent were more than making up for on the tax on the accounting side. So there, I mean, it would be a very, very complicated, but perhaps necessary thing to glance at and see if there is something that we need to tighten up more on the law.
Yes.
Thank you. The only other thing I wanted to touch here on the, on the collections was, there only one number kinda jumped out at me and that was the corporate income tax on a year-over-year basis. Last year was twenty-six million in receivables, this year is twenty-seven. So we kinda, kinda have a little stumble there, so if we can, if we can kinda tighten up that corporate income tax receivable area. But everything else on a year-over-year basis, again, just to clarify, just to reiterate, thirty-two million was outstanding in two thousand and thirteen, we're down to thirty now in two thousand and fourteen. Eighteen million eight hundred in withholding, we have about the same amount this year, slightly higher by about seventy thousand. Corporate income tax is a slight, slightly higher by a million. But business privileged tax, we went from forty million in two thousand and thirteen down to thirty-four million. So we are seeing progress on the, on the receivable side. And everyone, I wanna thank the agency very much for their hard work in, in moving these numbers forward again. We established the baseline, we're just gonna show continual improvement and I very much appreciate the hard work. Thank you very much. On the subject of taxes and how it relates to assets now, we have a, some sensitive issues that are coming up with respect to notices that went out for delinquent property taxes. And I would, I would like for us to be able to clarify that for the benefit of the public because there's some growing concerns that the, the assumption is they're going to have their properties taken away from them if they have delinquent property taxes. And one of the worries is, oh, my house is worth a hundred and fifty, I owe two thousand, I didn't take my, my, my house away. And I, and from what I understand, notices went out maybe about a month ago for delinquent, delinquent taxpayers?
Well, there, there's several notices that, I mean, every year we normally give out two notices. And, and as you noticed, last year we, we, we published the two thousand and twelve delinquent list. This year again, we had to publish it by law for those people that, that, that are still indelinquent. So we did publish the two thousand and twelve as well as the, the two thousand and thirteen this year. But on the two thousand and twelve, it was the second publish, it's, it's a law that required us to publish it for the second time to notify the, the delinquent taxpayers that they still owe the taxes. And at the same time, we're required to give a ninety-day notice letter notifying them of their, their delinquent tax. And what we did basically is, is the ones that are, are, the people are responding is the two thousand and twelve. I think we collected a lot in two thousand and twelve because people are coming in and just paying their, their, or clearing their taxes. Or at the same time, working with our, our department to, to ensure that they have some kind of an agreement with us because if they go back ten, ten, five years, you know, they, they come in and try to secure an agreement with us because we understand that, you know, we wanna make sure that they, 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 they acknowledge that they owe and if they. And if they, and we published it and, and basically they come in and say, uh, we have this, you know, several times, I did pay it, so we, we clear them. Uh, we clear them off the books and, and, uh, so what the law basically is when we publish the two thousand twelve is that, uh, it gives them ninety days and that ninety days expired in July fifth. So, right now, um, for the tax year two thousand twelve, we wanna make sure that all the payments are, are posted. All those rejects that are, that ran and didn't get posted are, are basically in a phase and, 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 and ensure that, that, uh, these payments are, 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 uh, are credited. So, uh, we're gonna have a, a list later on, uh, maybe next month, uh, to ensure that, I, I think we already, we wrote it down from, from, uh, uh, three point five or three point seven last year, when we published it, I think it's below one point five now. Uh, which is a, a big tremendous, uh, and, and we're not only collecting on two thousand twelve, when the person comes in and says, we, you owe two thousand twelve, oh, by the way, you owe, you know, eleven, ten, nine, eight, or four, you skip, you know, you, you didn't pay four, so they, they come in and pay. So, what we're gonna do basically is, is, uh, sometimes, uh, next month, we're, we're looking at deeding this property. We wanna make sure, uh, deeding this property is by law, uh, you know, to the government of Guam and, and, and from there, uh, you know, we're looking at, uh, looking at some of the properties that, uh, been there for so many years. Especially du-fund corporations and all these properties that are there, uh, you know, and we would.
Can I, just real quick, cause you, you asked me, I really need to touch on, so deeding properties to the government of Guam next month?
Yes.
Okay, now.
It, it's by law.
Okay, I, I know, I understand, what, it's very, very important that we had due process in place for all of these things. So, I really, can you please, for the benefit of the committee and the listening audience, explain what the, what the whole due process was prior to us getting to this point next month? And for me, my biggest concern is, were these individuals offered an installment agreement opportunity, an agreement, an opportunity to go into a payment plan to pay down the obligation and, and, and still retain the property?
And, and that's what I said earlier, uh, people are coming in and people are, are, are saying, uh, I have this, you know, a hundred and forty-eight thousand that I owe, you know. This is serious, you know, and, and not only for one piece of property, maybe four or five properties that are high in value for the last ten, fifteen years. And this is, and I've seen them that actually go out and, 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 and get a loan to pay these things. But if they come in and, and basically they make plans with us, you know, I, I, you know, our staff are there to assist them. So, those, those properties are, 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 are already, you know, on our books, that they're, they're, they're making contact with the Department of Revenue Taxation and they're, are addressing their problems. I, I had one the other day that, that says they're making contacts with the people off island because this belongs to the aunties and uncles. This gave us time, you know, we were gonna get the money, it was fifteen hundred dollars. So, they're trying to get the money so they can pay off all those, those, uh, those years. So, we are, 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 are working with the taxpayers that are, are, that are coming in and, and working with, with, with the department.
Are you guys notifying everybody by certified mail, registered mail?
We, we.
Make sure that they received some kind of communication? Because we don't wanna just send some kind of letter and it's going to, I, I have a mailing list in my office, when I reconcile it to the post office, that, especially of how the new post office is, you know, having difficulty aligning with what people are so used to putting down as their addresses. You know, we really need to make sure that, that the notice is getting to the actual property owner. So, are we doing this by registered mail or certified mail?
Well, we're, 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 we're doing it by, uh, certified, I think it's certified, it's certified mail. Um, and, and by law, we, we use the last known address. So, um, basically, if, if the last known address is, is two thousand eleven or twelve, we, we use that address. We have a programmer that looks for the latest address.
Are we publishing, publishing, do you guys plan on publishing? These properties will be dealing back to the government on this date, you know, and publishing the lot number and property description.
You mean before we?
Before we actually execute, I mean, I just wanna make sure that they had ample, everyone had full notice. And I also wanted to make sure they understand that you don't need to cut, like, let's say you owe five grand, you don't need to have five grand in your pocket, just come in and we'll set up an installment agreement, you know?
Some kind of arrangement.
That's right, that's right, I mean, I just wanna make sure every single hole is plugged before we take that last step, so.
That is part of the law that we try to communicate to every, every owner, not only owner, but here's and, and, and if there's known administrators or, or administrative, we, we try to do that. And, and, um, we're gonna take every effort to, to make contact with the taxpayers. And what we basically would like to do is that, I think, before we do anything, we, we're looking at even further notifying them if we have the funding to put it out again, to make sure that, uh, these people, uh, that still owes all these taxes, uh, before we deal all the property, uh, deal the, the, those properties to the government of Guam, that we try to communicate with them again to see what we can do. So, uh, uh, the, the, the important thing that we, we wanted to, and we've been waiting basically is that, uh, there is a procedure for, for the auctioning and the offer to the adjacent lot owners. So, uh, in ca- uh, for the process for us to go through. So, we're having the Attorney General Office update that procedure, uh, and, and, uh, so that we, we've been working with our legal counsel to make sure that if we, we move forward with any of these, uh, seishing of property and, and.
I, I really think that it should be no less rigorous than the foreclosure process. So, I mean, at the very least, you know, before a bank can take anybody's house, notice, 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 document, 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 publication in the paper.
Yes.
You know, and if we, if we, if we cross all our I, cross all our Ts and dot all our Is on that, you know, then we can rest assured that we did our, our good, you know, our due diligence and, and we followed a, a procedure. What I don't want is say, is to find out that, you know, it, what, it happened this way for this property owner, but it happened this other way for this other property owner. I mean, we need to make sure everything is airtight on this, because that is not something that we can drop the ball on even one time.
Absolutely, and I'd like to also mention that, um, you know, after we deed the, the property to the government, they still have one year of redemption to come in and make good on that, so that gives them an additional year.
The, the. Will this new procedure go under the triple A?
Uh.
You're saying you're talking to the A G about doing that procedure, it would seem to me that this would have to require a triple A.
The, the A G is, 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 uh, right now working on the procedure. And that's why it's taking them, uh, a little, a little bit more time. Uh, they, they wanna make sure that, they're looking at even other jurisdictions, you know, how they're doing it, regulations, how they do these, the process of, of auctioning. And, but currently, if, if you, if, there's two ways of, of looking at, uh, uh, disposing properties or delinquent properties. Uh, one way is, is, is basically to offer the adjacent owners at fair market value, it's in the statute. And, and the other one is basically to auction it. And, uh, uh, we are, you know, uh, gonna take all the necessary procedures to ensure that we follow the procedures. Our legal counsel is, 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 uh, when we, when we talk about these things, they wanna make sure that we, we follow the law and, and, and that we're not silenced in, in the future by any, any taxpayers that, uh, that may, may want, you know, take us to court.
I, 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 I must, for the record, clearly state that I'm a little concerned, maybe a lot concerned, that we're gonna be entering into the process of deeding within the next month. And we're still talking about having to get a procedure out from the A G's office on how, on how to do that. So, perhaps we should wait.
The, the.
I mean, prudence dictates, right? Maybe we should, we need to have everything just black and white. We, something we can pass around, if someone wants to go and pick up, what's the process for, you guys taking my property? We wanna be able to say, this is the entire procedure. And if, and if someone comes in and says, well, did you guys follow the first four pages of it? Yes, this is page one, this is page two, this is page three of everything that we did.
Let me, let me just.
And if we're not, hang, hang on, John, if we're not ready to prove ourselves that way, we need to, we need, I, 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 you know, this is a process that eventually needs to get, get squared away. But it, you know, the, the need for us to, to move in that direction also must be done in a way that we're able to, to, to really be answerable to the people and justify the, the cause of action. So, are we there? Can, if I, if I ask right now, please, please give me the four stapled sheets of paper that show me the exact procedure you're following in this process, can you give that to me? And then if I was a property that's gonna get deeded, can, can you show me how page one was followed through with and how page two and page three was followed through with? And if we're not there yet, then we need to wait, are we there?
Well, like I said earlier, there, there is a, a procedure already, uh, that I think, I believe was never exercised. Uh, I, I've never recalled where we actually seized the property and auctioned it out. I, I, I know the late, um, Ben Pangrino said, probably way back, there was one that he recalled. But I, you know, I, maybe I wasn't, uh, there yet, I was part of the, uh, audit, so. But from my knowledge, uh, uh, from even my predecessor, they said they, they never done a, a, a seizure and an auction in, in, in their career. The late, I mean, the, uh, my predecessor, Artie Logan, who was, uh, director for eight years, he, he never used that, so. Um, there is a procedure, it's just that when we, we looked at the procedure, it, we, we just, you know, we wanted to update that procedure. It's a procedure that was, was, uh, uh, I guess, um, issued by, by the A G's office themselves way back. I think maybe there was.
But is it something that the chairman or I can go into the, uh, gar and find it?
It, it, it's, it's, it's a procedure that was issued by, by the A G. I, I, we can, that one we can probably, it's, it's something that, uh.
But I mean, if we went into gar, the administrative rules, would we find it so that we, we would know what procedure you were going to be using?
I think, I think, oh, yes. So, we, I just don't have that, that number right now, so, or the section. But we're, keep in mind that we're, 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 we're gonna, we're doing this thing in a manner that we're, we're gonna be, our legal counsel says we have to be, you know, very comfortable to, to move forward with this, uh, this proceed, with this procedure. Uh, but, you know, uh, this is not the first time that we, we, we did it properly to the government. We've done it, uh, my predecessor done it before, I done it, I think, uh, earlier this year. I mean, we, we, if we go to the process, uh, that we, we basically go from the statute where we, uh, actually, uh, published the delinquent list, the following year, another delinquent list, ninety-day letter. What we, what, what's been, been done in the past is that, you know, although the properties are deeded to the government, it, it's never sold. But when the taxpayer actually comes in, we actually cancel the deed. And, and the taxpayer comes in and say, you know, here's my ten thousand, here's my five thousand, so we, we do a cancellation of the deed. So, it, it refers, it refers back to the, the, uh, the, the landowner.
Look, so, so give me, give me an example, like, cause you mentioned deeding to the government and then selling it at fair market value to the adjacent property owner or sell, or auctioning it off. So, if it gets deeded to the government, the government cannot do either of those things for one year?
No, no.
They cannot sell it at fair market value or they cannot auction it off for one year?
You're talking about the one-year redemption? The one-year redemption is basically if, it, it, it gives the taxpayer, uh, the owner the right to recover that property, just look closer on the back where.
Sure, I, I understand.
If it's sold, if it's sold today, you know, um, you know, basically, the owner has one year from that time to recover that property and, and actually pay the, 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 the new owner back everything or whatever cost that she paid or she paid. And that's the, it's in the statute, in other words, they have one-year redemption for the law, the.
Who are they redeeming it from? Are they, are they redeeming it from the government at the cost of the outstanding tax balance? Or they're redeeming it from the new owner, the government sold it to or auctioned it to?
That's gonna, that's gonna be in the procedure because the, the, um, if, if the property is actually sold, um, the first thing that's gonna happen is that they're gonna actually take the proceed and pay off all those, those, uh, uh, delinquent, uh, taxes that is owed by the taxpayer, then the remaining will go into trust funds and stay there for the, for the, uh, when, when, when the owner actually comes and claims it. Uh, again, we're doing, we're doing this because we have no communication, assuming we have no communication with the owners. So, if, 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 if a property is actually sold, for example, ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars, and the back taxes is fifteen with all the redemption costs and everything, uh, the procedure would say that the five thousand will be put in a trust, trust account. Uh, that's, that's in the, in, in, in the procedure, I believe, that, that, that we'll be looking at.
Yeah, and this is, let me just, let me just leave out the nightmare scenario that's playing out in my head, Ken. We have, uh, Tanana who didn't realize that she had a higher property tax for whatever reason, or she wa- she didn't miss the year or whatever. Her property gets seized because she doesn't get the newspaper at her house and her mailing, you know, she doesn't, you know, her nephew used to pick up the mail and now he moved out and no one's getting her mail for her. And so, all of a sudden, her property is delinquent, she has no idea, it's getting taken away. And when it finally does get deeded, somebody, the deed gets sold to an adjacent property owner, the neighbor who, you know, has been wanting Tanana's house for the longest time. And so, now they have to deed to her house and they knock on her door and they say, Tanana, you gotta get out, I'm gonna rent out your house. And she says, what? I had no idea. You know, that's why the certified mail, the original, I'm really questioning this whole process. So, they move Tanana out, they take her house, you know, cause they bought it from the government for the fair market value of a hundred and fifty, and she only owed two thousand. And now Tanana wants to redeem her house back, she has to come up with a hundred and fifty grand to pay back the owner, the new owner of the property, because it's now changed hands.
No, no, because, because the, if it was sold, the trust would be there, it's her money. Uh, I'm assuming this will happen for people that are not in the realm, in other words. But if you, if the example you're saying, whatever the amount that is on, on the balance after we pay off the, the property tax and we put in a trust account, that really belongs to the, to the original landowner.
Sure.
So, if, if.
But, but all kinds of things can complicate it, like, what if the new owner improves the property? And now the property is worth two hundred and ten thousand and they put in their own twenty grand, do they have to compensate? Where's that twenty grand gonna come from? I mean, I'm just seeing so many transactional problems here.
Right, no, you know, I, I understand your concerns and obviously, we're not ready yet, and that's why it's still at the A G's office. But let me reassure you that one of the processes will be identify the lot, then go out and physically inspect that lot. And if there's somebody living there, who's the owner, can we contact the owner? So, we'll make every necessary, we'll take every precautions necessary to make sure that that lot is absolutely delinquent. There's, you know, we can't identify the owner, those are the extent that we'll go through, not just, you know, we're gonna take property.
No, I'm not saying that, I, I, I'm not in any way trying to imply that, that, that the, um, the effort is going to be shoddy.
We, we, we'll make every.
I, I, I wanna make sure the process, even if we followed it to the T.
Yes.
Doesn't have some kind of issue that we should have changed or addressed before we executed it.
We will definitely, you know, maybe even put out another notice, these are the lots that we're looking at to auction. So, we'll make every effort, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, just this, this whole thing of, of deeding by next month, that's even news to me.
Yes, that's, that's part of the law.
And I'm the chair. You know, so, I mean, if, if it's news to the chairman of the overs, of the, of the agency, what more, Tanana?
I, I'm sorry, but that is a law that we're following, you know, we're just enforcing the laws that, that were made, so.
You know.
But, but, but that's the reason why I'm asking all these questions?
Yes.
Because if, if we're, if, if you're going to say that you're gonna move this forward next month and you're following the law, you better have everything airtight, because not only is, not only are there going to be lawsuits like crazy and complaints like crazy and oversight hearings like crazy, questioning every single line item of the procedure, but we're not, but in the end, we're not trying to be impediments to progress either. And if this process needs to be implemented, we need to implement it. We just wanna make sure that it's something that the community fully understands, they know what the timelines are going to be, they know what their rights are. And if the agency needs to prove every step of the way that they followed the letter of the law, that the agency is ready to prove that. And if we're there, then we're there. I'm not comfortable that we're there. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And so then, that being said, um, as we are still going through this process and it's, the rules and regs are still with the Attorney General and understanding the timelines that are defined by law, if you both, and that, and that's why you're there. If you're under, if you just know that we're not yet ready, then you need to request that an amendment to the law be made so that you're not in violation, right? And it's not to give you, um, it's not to give anybody more lag time or anything like, but, but realistically, realistically, because we don't want anything to blow up in anybody's faces and stuff. So, we're, you know, um, at the end of July, and so August is, is right there at the doorstep. So, I think we're looking to you, you know, wha- what is it? And when will A G kick out the rules and regs after they updated whatever it is needed to be updated? And then when's the awareness gonna kick in and when is everybody gonna have the time to do what they need to be done?
Yes, uh, we'll do that. Uh, I guess, um, you know, the A G is, is very cautious on, on getting the procedure. I mean, they, I, I, they, they said they were, you know, it, it's taking them some time right now, I guess it's, it's, it's a little bit complicated. But, uh, they're working on it and, and, and they're ensuring us that we, we need to make sure that when we get the procedures done that we, we're, we're, we're well covered, in other words, we, we follow it. And, uh, we're even looking at, they've been looking at other jurisdictions, how they do their, their, their procedures. And that, uh, we're even looking at, they've been looking at other jurisdictions, how they do their 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 procedures. And 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 trying to see what we can do to, and I'm not too sure if there's gonna be some recommendation to basically do regulations on this thing. I I'm not, I'm not there yet, so, uh, you know, this will be coming from the AG. So right now, it's it's not ready, we're we're waiting for it and it it's in the in the process of getting the procedure done.
Well, what I would recommend is, let's see what the AG gives us. And I know that I that you guys initiated something at a ninety day mark, which was about a month ago or so. And that takes us to next month, which would have been the deeding process. I think that the entire process needs to probably, um, go go on pause and maybe actually hit a reset button when we get those procedures from the AG and then start the timelines from there. Because if we're counting back to the initiation of the ninety day period a month ago, and we're saying that a month ago plus this month plus next month equals deeding, and then the AG's procedures are only gonna come in maybe the next two weeks, what if what the AG recommends is somewhat different from what we initiated nine, you know, sixty days ago? So, you know, we will, I I, you know, we've been making progress, I think we'll get to this point. I just wanna make sure we both get there comfortably and we're all on solid footing, you know, from the AG to the agency, to the oversight, to the to the office of the governor. I mean, you know, to the, and of course, the property owners, you know, the taxpayers. Yeah, so, um, can we, can we, can we publicly state we're not deeding anything next month?
Uh. Uh. It, you know, we 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 we're following the laws of statute, um, like it.
When was that statute passed, John? You've never used it in the term that you've been there, your predecessors have never used it. It's been, it preceded your predecessors, right?
It's been there for so many years.
I I understand, and that's what I think the chairman is saying, is that you, do you need to do it next month? When it's been on the books for almost forty years?
The 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 only property that we're 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 deeding are the properties that are are for two thousand twelve. And that's 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 according to the law, um, I it it.
But even that, John, I mean, oh my gosh, so many warning bells, equal protection? What if the, what about the guy that didn't pay in two thousand eleven? What about two thousand ten, why are you only targeting two thousand twelve?
But that's what the law says.
And that's exactly what, I wanna keep us out of court. I don't want this stuff to go to court and all of a sudden, we get some kinda ruling that we, you know. We don't need to go there. We're talking about, we're talking about people's homes and stuff, so I'm not comfortable yet. And as as the vice speaker brought up, this this law's been on the books for a while, I'm not a scofflaw. I haven't even put up my big signs yet because I have issues of the way the laws are written. So I know that this may be on the books now with respect to how the laws are, but this is one of those issues where we need to really look at it prudently and make sure that we're we're following the process. I mean, the very fact that you're seeking a procedural, um, breakdown from the AG's office, really causing the question whether or not the existing procedure is sound. I mean, if we were, if we're saying it's the law and we're good to go and we're gonna move forward on it, why are we even waiting for new procedures from the AG?
No, I'm sorry, let let me clarify that.
Okay.
The deed is different, what the AG's looking into is the auctioning, the rules and and regulation for that. The deed is already something that we've been doing in the past.
In the past, I mean, we've been, we've been, like I said earlier, we've been deeding property to 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 the government in the past. But what we've been doing is that if if the taxpayer, uh, the owner of the property comes in and and says, I I wanna make good to my on all my properties and and they come up and they they pay and clear them, what we normally do is we cancel the deed and 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 return it to the 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 new owners. That's what we're doing now. When we deed this property, it 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 doesn't necessarily gonna say that we're gonna sell all these properties. I don't think that's the intent that we're we're looking at. I think the 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 intent is that we're just following the law and and the law says that, uh, if we issue the 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 notices within certain days, we give them, I'm 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 telling you, before July fifth, there's so many people that are coming in and 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 they're they're very concerned. And I, and you know, they're coming in and they're paying off their their real property taxes. But, you know, at at the end, uh, like I I said, when we published it last year, it was about three point five, three point seven, I I told it was that below one point five already. So, uh, you know, we 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 just wanna make sure that we we continue to to, uh, enforce this law and and, you know, let people come in and 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 take care of it. And it it doesn't necessarily mean that if we deed all this property, you know, next month or at the end of the month, that we're gonna actually, you know, seize all this property and and basically sell all these properties. I I that's not our intent. Our intent is that we're just following the law and we're gonna look at these properties. And from these properties, we're gonna continue to communicate with the taxpayers to see how 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 we can try and 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 get it and get these properties to Department of Education, you know, the the all these monies that it that it owe. That's our our intent is is to, and I was really surprised when we ran the report that, you know, this year, we would normally collect about seventeen, I think we're already about twenty one, twenty two million, uh, you know, on real property collection. So it it's really working to 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 ensure that, you know, the the Territorial Education Facility Fund gets its funding.
No, I understand that, and like I said, the the intent in in no way is to stymie the process. But when we, if we're going to be, if we're going to be crossing that Rubicon of actually deeding the properties out, we, I need to feel fully confident that the notices, that every single notice that was supposed to have been sent out was sent out, that every single effort to to get in touch with the the taxpayer was made, that when they got, that they, when they were communicating with, they understood that they could go in and do a payment plan. And that was another issue that was brought to me, you know, they're like, I can do a payment plan, I said, yeah, they didn't, that wasn't in your letter? Did you just put that in the letter? You know, because if you didn't put in the letter, maybe somebody got that issue and was like, I can't come up with five grand ISUs and they just sit sit that, sit at home and cry. You know, I mean, if we're not communicating effectively, you know, then then we're we're going to drop the ball. And I just, I really want to make sure before we take that next step.
And we'll make sure that, you know, we 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 work with the AG and in in the process that we're looking at moving forward. And and just, you know, when we we follow the law and we we basically deed these properties over to the government because the law says that it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna actually auction all of them out.
Well, that, and you keep saying that, John, that that actually concerns me too. I mean, so what?
It doesn't say you're not gonna par- auction any, you're saying all.
No, but that that also concerns me too, because so what, you're gonna pick and choose who's gonna get auctioned? And then, and then what's the, what's the procedure for that? Where's the, where's the due process for that?
On the procedure, in other words.
That's where, that's where we're reading to call a timeout.
Provide you the procedure, you know, if you wanna be comfortable, uh, with 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 the procedure.
I mean, my, John, that's a, that's a, that's a, no, but what about the the issue of if you if you deed it, you're only gonna, you're only gonna auction some and not others? I mean, how on earth are you gonna be able to justify that in a court of law? That, yeah, I took from John, I took from Mary, but I only sold John's property and I'm holding on to Mary's?
We haven't decided those those things yet.
That's why we need to wait.
Still being reviewed, those issues, right, right, absolutely.
No deed should change hands until all of that's clarified. Not only the issue of, you know, who gets sold, but the issue of how do I go about redeeming my property? And the question of, let's say it gets sold, improvements are made, who's gonna make, who's going to be on the hook for the difference? The new property owner? Are they being fully communicated with, any improvements are are subject to their own loss? I mean, there's a lot of layers, now, John, the reason why I know about these layers is because I worked in the banking industry.
No.
For closures are federally regulated, I mean, that's not something small, you know? This should not be something small. So moving this, moving this forward next month without clarification from the AG, exactly how this process is gonna take place? Without the public even knowing what their what their recourse may be? What, without the, um, the potential bidders on these auctions fully understanding what the risks might be? I think we're we're being a little too hasty, let's just slow it down and let's make sure all all the pieces are in place. And I would like for us to have another meeting on this issue, so that you guys can show me from A to Z and so the public can understand from A to Z how the process was initiated, how the communications were sent out, what recourse was afforded to the property owner in terms of, you know, making full payment, making installment payments, whether all that was communicated, when the deeds are gonna take place? How they can go about going and bidding at the auction, I mean, how, what about that? What is the actual auction procedures, you know? When the property is actually auctioned, what are the new property owners' rights and risks? And what are the rights and, um, opportunities for recovery of the property from the prior property owner? And, you know, how does that whole process take place from there? I think we need to have a full, uh, explanation and a and a almost a a a packet in our booklet, you know? Here you go, this is exactly how we're handling it.
And that's that's the reason why we we wanted to update that procedure, we wanna make sure that, uh, you know, because it's 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 an old procedure that was, I guess, issued by the AG back then. And and, uh, the AG, you know, we 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 looked at it and says, eh, let's do it, you know, let's update it and make sure that, uh, we follow the procedures. And and when we're doing those things is they look at other jurisdictions and 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 how they how they 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 deal with with, uh, with, uh, seizure and auctioning of property.
I understand.
We're 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 just working, we're we're not there yet, we're working with the AG and, you know, hopefully, I I'm not too sure when the AG is gonna actually complete the procedure. It might be next month, I don't know.
But but we share your, you know, the same concerns, we wanna make sure that everything is in order. You know, we made every possible, every possible attempt to contact the landowner, made sure we gave her the options to pay. So so, you know, we have the same concerns as you, we don't wanna go in there and take Tanana's property, of course not. We'll work with her to get that payment in. But in the meantime, all all we're talking about right now is the auction and that's what the AG's reviewing. The deed is by law, so if you want to change that law, then I I I believe, you know, you have that option too.
No, I don't think either one of us is trying to stop the deeding to property.
The deeding, right.
Uh, my concern is, John keeps saying, we're not gonna auction all the property.
We don't know where we're at, right? Until we get the 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 rules and regs, we can't say what properties we're going to auction and what we aren't.
I I understand, but I think the chairman and I both are a little concerned that that one adverb, all, is disconcerting, you know? Does that mean any? Or is it only gonna be mine because it's beaches?
Rest assured, Bo, then you know. But but, you know, again, rest assured that we won't take any action unless every step is properly taken and met and.
But see, that, but but that's that's where I'm coming from also in that, if we don't even know what that step, what that process entails, how could somebody who was noticed ninety days ago, fully provisioned to to take action with respect to those procedures if they had no idea what those are? I mean, if those procedures come out a week before the deed, how can they go out and properly raise the necessary funds? Or get in touch with the property owner and say, okay, you know, yeah, you know what, they're gonna auction next, they're gonna auction it, this is the date, this is the auction process? You know, if you wanna, if you wanna keep the property, this is the amount that they pay off? What do you want me to do? I mean, because we don't even have that procedure in place now, notifying the property owner ninety days ago that you're gonna get deeded without fully understanding what the consequence of that deed could potentially be with those procedures, I I think is a, is an injustice to that whole timeline. I mean, it's like saying, John, you know, in ninety days, I'm gonna give you a performance review, and you're gonna say, okay, what are you gonna review me on? I'm gonna say, I'll tell you, uh, the day before, but I'm gonna review you for those full ninety days. You're gonna be like, well, I could have been performing over the course of those ninety days if I had known what my performance review was gonna be on. But because you didn't tell me in the beginning, I wasn't able to meet the expectation. And so because we don't have that process in place now, us notifying people ninety days prior that, oh, this is gonna be happening, without them knowing what what action to take in the interim in order to circumvent that, I don't think, I don't think that the timeline should have taken effect until A to Z, the entire procedure was ready. Vice Speaker.
Since you were saying you're you're only concerned about twenty twelve property tax, right? Right now? I'm, I was surprised the other day when a constituent came up to me and said that they received a property tax statement for Chamora Land Trust property. Is that correct, that you're sending out?
Yeah, 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 there, those people are being taxed, yes.
And this constituent told me that she received a tax statement not only for twenty twelve, but for back payment since she received the pro- the Chamora Land Trust property, which was back about six years, is is that correct?
If it's escape assessment is, in other words, if he, if if the property becomes taxable back on the date that you said, what, two thousand seven or?
She said it was six or seven years ago.
Let's say, let's say, uh, two thousand, uh, eight, eh, you know, eight, uh, if if it's taxable at that time and and we felt to tax it, we were covered by law to do the escape assessments.
So you're doing escape assessments? And this poor woman was telling me that she got a tax statement for several thousand dollars, is that possible?
It's based based on the value, yes. Remember the the audit just came out recently about, uh, value that Chamora Land Trust that are leased at a four hundred and eleven million dollars? So it's based on value, it it could be possible, yes, because you're talking about six years.
And so if we allowed you to move forward with this process of deeding back to the government delinquent twenty twelve property, I mean, prop- uh, property that that didn't pay their twenty twelve taxes, do I understand you saying that you're going to be deeding?
It's a different, a different role. Eh, eh, the law says that, uh, that, uh, when we produce the role, the Chamora land will be a separate role. Remember that Chamora land belongs to the government, so.
Okay, so what what are you gonna do? Well, yeah, so what what's gonna happen to that, to that current leaseholder? Are you going to deed it back to the Chamora Land Trust and take it away from that landowner?
I I need to look at the the contract, I, we don't know the contract, uh, it's Chamora Land Trust that does the contract. So, um, we we need to, we need to co- confirm with them what happens if they don't, they don't, uh, pay those taxes. I I gotta go back. But the 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 assessment role are are produced to separately, one for the entire island, which includes the ev- ev- everything, and another one on the Chamora Land Trust property that are leased, uh, that are leased out.
So. So just to make it clear, I I I didn't realize that you were, I I knew that you had put the four hundred and forty one million onto the appraised value of the government of Guam. But I did not realize that you were sending out taxes for Chamora Land Trust. When was the first year that you sent out property taxes for Chamora Land Trust?
Uh, remember when we we we, uh, we were trying to do the bond, we did some adjustments on the Chamora Land Trust? So we 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 defined the the Chamora Land Trust on the real property aspect as well as the home exemptions, remember we were going that?
Yeah, that was about.
I I don't recall when we started building them, uh, it it has to be more than two thousand eight because it it was built all the way back there, so it's.
I I understand, but the the rewriting of the the bonds was since I came to this legislature, I think it was nine or ten. So what year did you guys start sending out billings for Chamora Land Trust?
Ever since, uh, I think the law on the Chamora Land Trust basically is that they have a grace period of seven years, remember? After that seven years experience, it becomes taxable, so that's the 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 rule. So, uh, uh, in in other words, it's a law that was passed, I guess they get the first seven years, uh, tax free. And when when this, uh, uh, owner, I mean, the the occupant, basically, uh, after that, is the steward, then it becomes taxable moving forward. So whatever our our staff is looking to make sure that, uh, although these, a lot of these leases are 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 leased out, we wanna, we wanna make sure that we we, there are at least seven years from the day it was leased. So that's the thing, the key word that that, uh, I'm I'm seeing on the on the Chamora Land Trust properties.
So I just, I just wanted to confirm, so that that woman was was being truthful when she told me that she had gotten a tax bill for several thousand dollars? Because you're assessing escaped taxes for prior years?
Yes, if 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 that, I guess, he probably had the lease for long times, if he goes back that far, that means he had the bond at least a long time ago. So so they, he probably knew that he had it a long time ago.
Uh, probably was one of the first ones.
Okay.
So I I and the poor thing was almost in tears about a six thousand dollar bill, and you're like, boy, I, there's no way I could. And I was like, I didn't even realize you were being taxed, but but i- i- they are being taxed.
Yes.
Okay.
So I need clarification from you guys on what to do about this whole deeding thing. I mean, you guys are saying it's the law, I I've heard it mentioned, you can change the law. What are you guys gonna do? Are you guys gonna deed by next month? Because if you are, then we're going to have to really look at changing the law or at least doing some kind of moratorium legislation until such time that the entire process from A to Z is codified. I mean, if we're still working on figuring out how to auction, I, we have no business, we have no business seizing properties until we're we're done ready.
That the statute, the statute basically says that, uh, after July fifth, uh, uh, basically, we give them their their ninety day grace period, uh. Ah, we, we're still gonna look at those properties, people that come in after the, after July fifth, they're doing that right now. They're still, they're still coming in, paying, paying, paying off their, their two thousand twelve and even thirteen and, and prior years. So basically, we're, we're just following the law. I mean, if, 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 ah, if, if we're done and, and, and we're, we're, we're comfortable to deeding it over to the government by law, I think that's something that, ah, we, we're gonna continue doing, ah, moving forward. Ah, I guess we're not gonna outright get all these properties and, and put them on, 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 seize all these properties at the same time and try to auction them out. Ah, that's just the intent that we're, we're, we're looking at. I mean, we're just following the law. Ah, we'll, 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 we'll take a look at it one more time, but we're just, we're just following the law. I mean, we did it in, in prior years. Except, you know, we just don't enforce the, the auctioning and the, the offering of, of, of these properties to the adjacent owners. We, we never did that, so. It's, 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 you know, eh, eh, we're just doing it. I mean, that's, that's something that we, we, we wanna make sure that we published it last year, this year. A lot of people came in, they, they paid it, they paid all their taxes, these are the people that are really concerned. And, and I'm glad because, you know, we're now, we're, we're, we're short on the territory, is it gonna facilitate a fund? Seven million dollars, but at least we're making up for the difference, you know, moving forward. So, ah, it, it's something, ah, that we, we plan on doing and, ah, you know, we'll, we'll, we're, we're gonna stick with the law unless otherwise.
Well, that, and that's where I have an issue, John, because you keep saying, stick with the law, stick with the law, stick with the law. But you still don't even have your auction process down yet.
The, the auction process is not, it's not, it's not, i- i- it's not necessary that you have that, ah, on, on hand.
Is that under law?
No, it, it just says that after July fifth, you know, we, we, we can deed those properties over to the government of Guam.
And then what can the government do with those properties?
Well, the, the, the government can take actions on, on, on either, ah, auctioning and all.
And is that in the law?
It's the law.
So then you're saying you can follow the law, but then that part of the law you're not ready yet.
That would not happen right away.
Well, that, and that's what I'm saying, I mean, if we're saying we're following the law, we're following the law, we're following the law, and a part of the law isn't even ready yet, then we're, we're, we're following an incomplete law.
We won't, we won't do that unless the procedures are comfortable, I have to be comfortable with the procedures and I'm a legal counsel.
And if we're not comfortable with that en- that, that, that part of the process, we shouldn't be initiating the process. We shouldn't be having this ninety day timeline starting from July fifth, counting down the deed.
We cannot, it's mandated by law.
And so is the auction process.
You know, eh, eh, it's mandated.
But that's, that's not something that you're gonna stay, stay firm on?
If I didn't issue those ninety day letters in a certain time, I, I'm not complying with the law. I'm just following the law. The law says that you need to issue a ninety day and publish it, I did.
Sure, and what about the auction process? Is that in the law also?
The auction process is that we can take those, those, ah.
And do we have that procedure?
It's not there yet.
So that's not in the law?
It's not.
So, and, and this is all one big, and, and the reason why, John, I'm bringing this up is it's one big process, okay? It's one big process. It's like saying, if you commit murder, you're gonna go through this process, you may get the death penalty, but, oh, what's the death penalty? Oh, we'll figure that out later. But you're gonna get the death penalty. You hear what I'm saying? No, let's get the whole process down. Let's get the whole process down and make sure that we're ready from A to Z to implement this thing and with confidence knowing that when someone comes in and asks us a question about any step in the process, we're going to be able to say with confidence, we're following the law. You keep saying follow the law, but you're only talking about A to Y.
Because there's timeline, when I say follow this timeline, I mean, if I don't issue those, those, those ninety day at a certain time, then I'm not following it. So I have to issue those ninety day at a certain time, and I have to publish those listings at a certain time because that was the law says. I, I can't go back, if I don't do that, then I, I won't be able to follow the, I'm not following the law.
And I go back to my initial question. Will this whole procedure and process require that these new rules or regulations or process that's being pro- proposed by the A G goes through the Administrative Adjudication Act? Or are you just gonna promulgate it on April, on August the first without triple A and having comment from the public?
Well, that's, that's something that I, I mentioned earlier. You know, I, I spoke to the legal counsel, that we may have tough regulations, I did say that. And he, you know, he, he said that he may, we may have to do regulations, and I'm waiting for the, for the, ah, the update of the procedure. And that's where, where, where we at. I mean, ah, eh, eh, it's, it's plain and simple, we have a procedure, we wanna update the procedure. If, if our legal counsel says we have to go through the triple process of, of doing the regulations for this whole procedure of auctioning, C shirt, ah, C shirt auctioning and, and, and offering, then we'll do that. That's what, eh, that, that's what we'll do. But we're just still, we're still following the law. The law says that we, I have to publish it, I have to publish at the same time, I have to issue the ninety day at a se- at a certain time, and, and people are coming in, and people are coming in and paying off their taxes.
And I appreciate trying to get the money off for the T E F F, but part of that is also the appraisal, and, and the chairman hasn't gotten into the appraisals yet for the reappraisal. So I'll wait until he does that and then I'll ask my questions, but there's, there's this whole thing that I'm, the, all the timelines, because if I remember correctly, you announced that the reappraisal is gonna be done by August, right?
August thirtieth.
Yes, and you're going to have it before the Board of Equalization in September, on October, October.
October, probably by October thirty first.
And the Board of Equalization, you're expecting to be able to get them to make a decision and announce so you can send the new bills out in November, if I remember correctly.
November, December, yes.
November, December. How many members do you have on the Board of Equalization?
I think we have currently three.
And how many are you supposed to have?
I think five.
I just confirmed one, that's, that's the reason why I'm asking. We're trying to follow the law, but we don't have a full Board of Equalization. How could a Board of Equalization be reviewing these new appraisals in August when I don't have the confer- the nominees here?
I, I think you only need three for a quorum. So, eh, ah, there is a quorum and they've been meeting, I mean, they're, the, the Board of Equalization has been meeting as mandated by law. I think we just, we, I think they just met recently because the, the law says they have to meet at a certain time. If I, if.
I'm trying to fi- I'm trying to figure out who you have on the na- would you send me the names that you have on your listing? Cause I checked with, with our central staff, and I don't have, except for the one that we confirmed last week, there's nobody else on the Board of Equalization.
We have, we have, ah, Cotton, we have, ah.
When did their terms end? Because I'm trying to figure that out.
I, 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 I did check with my staff and they said their, their, their terms are.
Remember I called you and I asked you whether or not this new member that the governor sent to me, we confirmed anyway?
Yeah. But from, I, I can get back to you, but I, I, I spoke to my staff and they said those three are still current. In other words, I, we, I can verify again, ah, Vice Speaker, I'll verify and get back.
Because you have this whole, again, timeline that you're trying to move this thing, and, and we appreciate that you're trying to raise money because we need the money and I, I, you know, I appreciate that, but the thing is, is that we need the nominees, so that I'll conduct the hearing five days from now at six o'clock in the evening, just so that I can meet and get your confirmation through. I confirmed somebody who I wasn't happy with. Even Senator Yamashita was having problems with the, with the nominee, but we, you know, he wasn't a convict, so we we had to.
But going back to the, the auctioning, I, I just want, eh, eh, he uses the word may, and, and, and that's something that we, you know, in the past, you know, um, i- it's an optional thing. So, ah, ah, you know, eh, eh, the word may. So, ah, you know, we're doing every single thing that we need to do to ensure that all the taxpayers are informed. And, and we're not gonna go out and, 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 and try to auction properties without really trying to make contact with the, the original owners. That's something that we, we wanna assure, ah, in, in the future. We just wanna make sure that, that, ah, we communicate them before we even actually, ah, even go to the process of, of trying to do the C shirt and auction.
I know you're still with the auction. I, I moved on to the new appraisals because there are other people out there that are panicked about the notices that you sent out that taxes are going up in the couple, next couple of months. Did, did you send out notices to people, do I understand?
No, we, we, we sent out, the only letter, the, the letter that we sent out is to notify them that we're doing the, the, ah, reappraisal for the, for, for all the properties on Guam. And, ah, I, I know there's a bill that you have, I think it's a bill out, you know, ah, actually to extend the, the, ah, the credit, so, ah, ah, we, we notify, we, we were obligated to notify all of the taxpayers of Guam, ah, basically that we're doing the revaluation and that, you know, the patients are gonna be coming by their house and, and, and looking at their house. So we put that all in the letter.
Yes, I understand, and we've rece- I, at least I've received some concern calls about does that mean that my property tax is going, be going, going to be going up? And how much? And so that's why I'm asking the questions about the Board of Equalization and the ability to be able to review that new appraisal that's coming out and to be able to challenge it.
What, we're gonna follow the procedures, what, what we're gonna do, the reason why the, the, the project is gonna be completed ah, on August thirtieth, because we have to send out the preliminary notice by law on September first. So all the taxable properties are gonna go out on, on September first, notifying, ah, all the taxpayers of the, the results of the, ah, the, ah, the reappraisal, revaluation of the, of their, their properties. From there, ah, eh, eh, the reason why we have to do that is because they have a grace period between September fifteen and October fifteen to file an appeal with the board. The board is well aware of these things. Ah, the, the vendor who's doing the, 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 ah, revaluation is well, well, well aware of these things, that they're obligated to defend their work, they're there. Ah, ah, they're gonna be there to defend their work, ah, in, in the event that somebody feels a grievance, says, I disagree with the, the, ah, the, ah, the appraisal. Ah, how did you do it, whatever, they're there to defend it, ah, for us, ah, we'll be there. So after that, ah, the, the board will be ready to, to, ah, look at it by law. They're, they should at least by law by October thirty first certify that role. That, that, the new role that, ah, based on the, the revaluation of the, of those properties. So that's, that's briefly, and, and like you said, by November, December, we'll be getting those, ah, those bills out to, to the people.
And how many property tax, property owners do we have on this number?
We have about sixty-six thousand parcels of property that are out.
And if, if you have even just one percent of them come in and appeal, six hundred and sixty appeals in thirty days, you think your Board of Equalization is going to?
No, 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 the, the appeals is just, that, the, 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 the process, eh, just to submit. The, the, the appeals are sometimes, ah, resolved in years. In, in other words, if, just to put in your appeal between September fifteenth.
But in the meantime, you, in the meantime, you have to be paying your pro- that new assessed property tax?
Well, eh, eh, I think the law states that if, if, if you don't agree with it, ah, you can pay what you agree. And, 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 ah, at the end, ah, the, the board is gonna make a decision whether, whatever the results, ah, ah, at the end. So if the appeal is resolved in two thousand fifteen or sixteen, we can make those adjustments, whatever the board decides. I mean, if, if he favors the taxpayer that, you know, the value should be not a hundred but ninety, then they will make those adjustments at the time the, the board makes those agreement.
I need to go back to the deeds. I, um, Vice Speaker wants to get into the Board of Equalization stuff, we might actually have to have another hearing to talk about that. This deed issue, I mean, John, basi- basically what you're saying is you're following the law, so you're just gonna keep going. And so what I'm going to say is, if, if you're so confident that you're following the law, I wanna make sure of it. And so if we're not going to hold off on this, then we're going to come back here and I wanna see everything. I wanna see the names of all the people who are going to have their properties deeded. I wanna see copies of all the letters that were sent to them, certified mail. I wanna see the phone logs of all the phone call attempts that were made to try and reach these people to let them know. And anything else that was done, ah, procedurally to take us to the deed process, because if you're going to be so adamant that you're doing it because you're following the law, then let's make sure of it, because I'm not, I'm not comfortable. If we go through this process and, and it looks like everything was done exactly to the letter of the law, like you're confidently standing behind, then we will move, then we will, we will keep going. But that's where I, that, that whole procedural part is, is my question. I mean, if you wanna keep driving this forward, then let's make sure that we're driving it on a straight and narrow path. So are we ready to come in maybe next week, Thursday? Um, we'll make this be the official public notification that we're gonna follow, follow up with this hearing next week, Thursday, specifically on the, um, property deeding question and have all of those things lined up. Yeah, uh, yeah, Senator, Senator, you should.
So, so, but I really, I think we all want integrity to the system, I don't think there's a, a question anywhere. And as has been stated already, um, we appreciate you being focused and moving along. I think really, um, Mr. Director, the question that's being raised right now is the whole auctioning process. And, and, and I know already that it's with the Attorney General and I appreciate all the research. I think an answer to a lot of the concerns would be by when is the A G gonna be done with their review and their recommendations? And then furthermore, will an adjudication process have to kick in? What is that whole public hearing process gonna look like? So that we can understand how we're gonna, how those rules and regs are gonna be determined so that if anyone's land is gonna be auctioned off, then there's, there's enough time for the public to be aware. I think those, those pieces of, ah, information need to be provided so that you two will know that we, that they will, will have it done in three months.
And, 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 I'm, I'm, all this time I'm saying I'm waiting for, for their, their.
And so I think, Mr. Director, you need to ask the Attorney General by when. When is the time that I'm gonna have the, the work being done? They should be able to give you by when the work will be done so that you'll know. And then you'll know, and then you know we can move forward from there. But they can't say, well, they really can't say to you, in fairness to you, well, we, we're not sure, but maybe in, maybe in. They should be able to tell you. Or you should be able to say to them, we would like this work done by whatever, you know, you want it done. Otherwise, it keeps slipping in priority. You know, I mean, I'm working with them on certain issues and that's the way we have to work with them. I need it in two weeks and stuff. So, Mr. Chair, that's, I just think, you know, that's a puzzle piece that is on the table because we are concerned about that. I think you've got the deeding under control, you certainly seem to know the law and you're following it, but the whole auctioning part, which doesn't really sound like it's gonna kick in, but if it does kick in, we wanna make sure that everybody's aware, everybody, you know, um, ah, knows what the rules and regs are gonna look like.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, for, for me, taxes are taxes and everybody should be paying their fair share, absolutely. You know, but if we're going to be taking this next step, which I think is fine, I wanna feel fully comfortable that we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing as we move in that direction. And, um, just to hear that we're, we don't have an auction process set up, but we're already starting the clock, that's already a real big red flag for me, and if the, and if the agency, and, you know, Mr. Director, you, you represent the governor, and so if the agency at the governor insists that we continue on this track, for me to be comfortable, I wanna make sure that we, we've done everything that we are actually supposed to have done up to this point, which means all the names of everybody, I want to see copies of all the letters that were sent out, phone logs, all the co- attempted contacts that were made to let them know. You know, and, and there's several things I'm gonna be looking for in that letter, did you inform them that they could have possibly done a payment plan? You know, ah, and then, and then I guess you're using the last address of record to try and contact these people, but I don't know, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just not fully satisfied that, that what we're doing is, is really the right way to be going about it, you know, to, to be able to comfortably sleep at night and say, I didn't just, I didn't just do the, 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 you know, I didn't just do what I was supposed to do, I, I did what was the right thing to do, you know?
Put, put it this way, ah, Mr. Chairman, ah, we published this last year, okay? You, you have access to those information. We published it this year, you have that access to those information. The only information you probably would need is a list of the ninety day letters that went out. And that's basically what we're saying, I mean, it's, it's, it will be the law. You already got the, we published it last year by law, the twelfth. We published it this year again because we required, we issued the ninety day. And, and that's something that we, 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 eh, you, you need, it's probably the list of the, ah, the ninety days that went out, but it's, it's in the law. And that's why we, we're saying, ah, two thousand thirteen, we published it two thousand thirteen this year.
Yeah, but see, let's say, let's say you did the ninety days, right? Last address of record, right? And let's say it got returned, returned to sender.
We, we did a obligation by law.
That's when I wanna, I wanna see the phone logs of, okay, well, we returned to sender, but this is the telephone number of the person, so we tried to contact them on this day.
We did our obligation by law by issuing the, the, the ninety day, ah, you know, ah, it's, it's something that, ah, that we, we do, even income tax, ah, you know, same thing. You know, we, we notify taxpayers on the last known address. So we'll, we'll do that, I mean, if you, we can give you the list, if that's. So we'll, we'll do that, I mean, if you, we can give you the list, if that's, you know, all the list of the ninety days that went out, but it's same thing that was, that list that was, uh, on the, that was published this year, is the list that went out on, on ninety day.
The delinquent taxpayers of two thousand twelve, could that also include property owners who may have paid two thousand eleven, two thousand ten, two thousand nine, but, but didn't pay two thousand, two thousand? Or, or you claim they didn't pay two thousand in two thousand one? Because I know the chairman had i- issues earlier in a previous hearing where there were people weren't listed in the publications in two thousand five, six, seven, eight, nine. All of a sudden in eleven, they're being listed for delinquency for two thousand, two thousand one. Why weren't they listed in four, five and six if they were delinquent four years before that? And are these the people in two thousand twelve that you're saying are delinquent and you're going to deed their property over?
And it's those kind of holes, the, and, and that's why, you know, when we, when we started working together, and we're, and I'm, I wanna go back to the fact that we're making good progress and I really, really appreciate it. But it's because we've had holes in those in the past that made me wanna make sure that as we move forward with this new process, that there are no holes. And so for us to go from having, having the gaps to all of a sudden being fully confident that we're following the law, that's a huge leap for me right now. I'm, I'm looking at us building up towards, okay, we're getting there, you know? And so for us to take that leap and say, we're now moving towards um dealing and auctioning when we haven't even gotten publishing down, you know, that's why I'm very concerned. And uh, I appreciate the progress. I, and this is, this, this coming from me, I guess I'm, I'm, I bother the Vice Speaker all the time, but, you know, let's move these, all of these initiatives forward, but on, on something from, on something from here as far as the, the properties are concerned, I'm just, I just wanna make sure that there are no holes as we go into dealing and auctioning, you know? So what can you give me to reassure me? Otherwise, I'm gonna have to introduce something, do some kind of moratorium legislation, beg for the Acting Speaker to give us an emergency session and pass it. And, you know, I'm not trying to get in the way of your work, you know? But I want, I want us to be all on the, all on the side of the people, you know? And not just saying that we're following the law and we did what we're supposed to do, but making sure that we're doing it the right way. I think we belabored the point, so um. Yeah, so I, I guess we'll chat after this, let me know, are we gonna, are we gonna put a pause on this? We'll, uh. Okay, and let me know right away so I can, I can do a release to the media, letting them know that we're gonna be holding off or delaying, or what, or not. I might have to let the public know one way or the other. But we'll talk, I guess, at the conclusion of the, of the, of the oversight hearing, I guess you, you guys need to figure it out too. Um, the only other issues I wanted to cover again on the, on the hearing was um online services, um, including um the online payment and the online registrations. I know in our last hearing in February, that was supposed to be turned on by April thirtieth. And we're still not turned on on the online services, I know that that was, we, that was stated April thirtieth.
Yes, that's correct. And unfortunately, we, we posed that April thirtieth to our vendor. And um, what had happened was initially, it was a legal, legal issues that he was addressing, they were addressing, and then it became technical. So right now we're at the payment gateway requirement. Um, there's modifications that has to be done to the program and that's, that's the holdup at this point, but they are um making progress, they are working on the um program. So you know how sensitive this data is and we have to make sure that we meet all the requirements.
Okay, so when, when are we on?
Target date, we're looking at target date is um the end of the year, December.
Wow, guys.
Yes, unfortunately.
That's a little too much to ask.
I, I agree, I wish.
This has been down for a long time, you know? And if this was Microsoft or Google, their stock would have gone right into the toilet, you know? Yeah, I mean, why, why can't we turn on online payments and go on?
There's two vendors that are, are, that are working together to get this done, but unfortunately, it's the requirements that the program has to be modified. Modified slash added, there's new requirements.
Are we paying for this delay?
Um, believe the program change, yes.
So they're making money while the people of Guam are waiting weeks and months to actually turn it on?
Well, we haven't paid yet, but, until they deliver. But in the meantime, that's, you know.
Is there any other vendor that we can use? I mean, there's gotta be, a payment gateway, I, I think you can use PayPal, right? I mean, what, there's gotta be other, other service providers out there, this one cannot get this on for our people. I mean, April thirtieth, now we're into July, now all the way to December, just to be able to turn on online services?
Right, remember initially it was legal issues and technical issues. Yes, so like, like I mentioned two months ago, it was because of now the requirement change. And target date is December.
I, I, I just can't. What can I do? What can we do? How, how, guys, how can we get this thing turned on? I mean, when you said April thirtieth, that was back in February, I was like, okay, a couple of months, we'll wait. When June came along, July, people were asking, hey, what's the deal? Even Facebook, you know, people are following us, pe- pretty closely on the progress we're trying to make here. And that, okay, it was supposed to be on, like, it's supposed to be April thirtieth, we're gonna follow up in this hearing. And now for me to have to go back and say in December thirtieth, and I have to say that I cannot accept that. Because that way, when I go public to the people, when I talk to them and they say, hey, what'd they say, they said December thirtieth, but I didn't accept it either. So now knowing that December thirtieth or end of the year is unacceptable, how are we gonna get it on sooner?
I know, we, we did have an option i- initially, but remember that there's two separate vendors here. So one was awarded the contract to do the online services and, and, or, or the merchant vendor. And because they're not providing the online services, we asked this other vendor to come in, but they have to meet those requirements on the payment gateway, so that's where we're at unfortunately.
We're able to appraise and revalue the entire island much faster than we're able to turn on online services. I mean, and even that was delayed, so I mean.
When, when we basically were looking at April, May this year, uh, this is something that we were, we were looking with, you know, getting, getting the online, online payment service up. But there's a lot of obstacle when, you know, moving forward and requirements and all these things. I mean, we really wanted, I mean, uh, I, I was the person that called, you know, my IT person almost every week and pushing for these things. So it's, it's not something that uh can be done right away. Uh, I mean, uh, we had a meeting on, on these issues, I.
But it, but it was on before.
But it's a whole different program now, a whole different requirement. And that's why they have to modify the program.
When the POS went down, it went down.
Are they doing, are they doing, are they doing online payment, payment gateways to any other uh customers? I mean, are we the only ones using this system that it takes uh an entire translation of a whole new language in order to figure out how to do something? Or are the, or is this vendor actually offering the same services to other, other companies? And, and that, that, that raises two questions, if they're offering it to other companies, why does it take so long to turn it on for the government of Guam? And if they're not offering it to other companies, why are we using a vendor that doesn't know how to use their own product?
It's a different vendor, that's the difference. He's using one vendor, then this vendor has a different requirement, so the program has to be modified.
So the, but then why are we going that route? I mean, i- i- do we ever sit down and, and ask the question, what's the most efficient way for us to get this done? Because to say from now until December, we obviously have a, a problem.
I, I can definitely look into it to see how, how early we can get it, but uh, it's a, a filing requirement, some requirements that just take some time to do.
That, that's so obscure, what exactly is causing the delay? I mean, can you tell me this form A, B, C, one, two, three is preventing this from happening? What, what exactly is causing the delay?
Uh, basically, that's what, that's what we're told. In, in, in other words, it's, it's a requirement thing that they have to go through. It's a process that, it's, it's not something that they can, if they can do it right, they'll do it right away. But if there's a process, it's, it, it takes time to, 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 I guess, go through that process. Uh, I, I, I'm not an IT person, but maybe I can probably ask my IT person to talk to you to better understand what the process is, you know, the process that they have to go through in order to get this thing done. Uh, that's what I was told, it, it just takes time. It, it's not something that uh, i- originally they said they can do it right away. Then all of a suddenly something came up, obstacles can come up in the long run. So when this obstacle come up, they said they need time because now they have to go to certain procedures. Time procedures that have to go through, and maybe somebody can explain it better than me, but it just takes time. And now the, 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 the uh, the goal now is, is move further, further back, maybe at the end of the year. But I continually talk to them and say, I want it as early as possible. So that's something that, that I can communicate with, with, with uh, with uh, our IT person that takes care of our, our IT and urban tax.
I don't wanna complicate it, but is this new system going to be able to communicate with the DOA?
It, it's supposed, it's supposed to, yes.
There, there will be, there will be.
Correct, yes.
We finally have resolved that?
It has to, because the payments have to be posted.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, because I've been asking that question. I mean, DOA collects for you guys.
Right.
But for the longest time, your two systems
Right.
had different languages and could not speak to each other. And consequently, nobody could find a, a revenue tax.
Right, before the POS, it was working beautifully, we all, everybody was communicating. And then when the POS went down, that's it, that broke the communication. And this online program, I mean, service will be able to bring us all together again.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted that one assurance, that they're, that they're, that they're, that they're interfaced so that when they pay, when they pay down a DOA,
It'll be posted.
It'll be posted at yours. Because I keep getting complaints, in fact, in trying to push through my legislation on, on getting the attorneys to, to get tax clearance before they get their new license, the complaint and their insistence is they're unable to get you guys to clear their licenses because you guys keep saying their taxes are incomplete or unpaid. And then they bring you receipts and show that they've paid, but you guys can't seem to find it anywhere. And they keep saying, you can't ask us to get clearance when it takes us months to try to get them to admit that they rec- uh, because they're unable to, to, to speak to each other, to clear our licenses and, and assure that they have a complete record of all the payments that were made. But you got, it keeps getting lost because you're still doing paper transactions.
Yes, you're right, that was a problem in the past, but with the TPS, that addressed all that.
The TPS.
And so now it, you're not gonna have that problem?
It's, it's room time, correct.
But that's not gonna be ready until December?
Well, the TPS is already online, I mean, probably working.
We're talking differently now.
Yeah, those are two separate things, right? So the TPS is already working and, and does um send that information, we're sharing that information. Now we're talking about the online and, and that's, that also will be going through DOA.
I, I, I really, December is just impossible, guys. I mean, I, there, I would, I mean, just think about it as if it was your own business. You know, imagine Revantax was your own business and you had to turn on online services for your customers. And your vendor came to you and said, December. In July, they said, oh, we'll turn on online in December. I would say, goodbye, Charlie. I need, I need a, a, a service provider who can get this to me in the next thirty days.
Right.
You know? So what's, what's up with that? Can we do that? What do, what do I need to, what can I do to get this thing turned on for the people?
It's, it's possibly earlier, uh, December is the, you know, prompt that deadline, but it could be earlier. I just don't wanna say, you know, September and then it, that doesn't work, so.
Who, who are these vendors?
Our vendor is um DMR.
DMR is one, who's the other one? You said there's two vendors and there's a issue there about it not being able to talk to something else or something like that?
No, that's, that's already been worked out, it's just a requirement.
No, I, I, I thought earlier, just a second ago, you were saying that one vendor was, that there's two vendors and there's an issue with the communications.
The other vendor is Bank of Guam.
Bank of Guam is the other vendor.
That has the merchant, merchant services.
Okay, so Bank of Guam and DMR, something is not working with the two of them and that's why we can't turn on online services at Revantax.
The requirements is what they're working on.
Yeah, I mean, bottom line is, if those two can get their act together, we'll turn on online services for, for, for the people of Guam. Okay, so I'm gonna get in touch with them and we're all gonna sit down and we're going to figure out who's not doing what. Because I need to understand that, that's just, December, I just can't. I mean, April thirtieth, when you guys told me that, that was in February, I said, all right, a couple of months. April came and went and now it's July, and now we're being told December. And that's like basically saying, oh, a year from now, for DMR and Bank of Guam to figure out how to, how to reconcile those things. Somebody is not doing something they're supposed to be doing. And we're gonna get to the bottom of it, because if, if these companies can't figure out how to turn this on for our people, then at the very least, we're gonna make it very public. That way, no other business goes off and does business with these vendors and gets stuck in the same twelve month hole of not being able to get online services for their people. And if we need to create that kind of public pressure in order to turn this on for the people of Guam, that's something that I'm willing to do. So you guys can get in touch with them and let them know, but we're gonna, um, I just got confirmation that we do have the hearing room available for next week Wednesday. We're gonna follow up on these two issues, uh, actually three. We're gonna follow up on the, on the dealing issue. Um, you guys go back, talk to your lawyers, talk to the AG. And by, by this hearing date or before, let us know if you're gonna stay firm on your, on your uh deed deadline by next month. And then from there, we're gonna figure it out as a body. The other issue is the GRT question that we, that we brought up about how um, some people are getting assessed, they're, they're not being offered the exemption because they had a, a banner year, one year, and they're being assessed the following year. And then the last issue is going to be this online services. And um, what we'll do is we'll have our hearing in the morning, we'll make it at ten AM. And then um, I'm gonna invite uh, I'm gonna invite DMR and Bank of Guam also to come and join us and uh, join us at the table and give us an explanation as to what's up with the online services. So um, ten o'clock, okay for you guys, with that work, next week Wednesday? We're okay, right on that, is that, is that on or off, uh, five A M? Okay, yeah, that'll, that'll follow the open government on the five day and the two day notice, Senator.
Uh, thank you, Senator, and just to clarify the, that first issue that Senator talked, is dating slash auctioning. I think the auctioning is really what we want.
See what we can do and get an update from our, from the.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, we, I mean, those, those three items are uh, I think, pretty, pretty heavy. But um, on, on other, on a last note, um, wow. The um, the gaming taxes and the remittances to the hospital. Um, I'm, I'm getting word that they're, they're not getting their, their uh amounts remitted to them regularly? Is that happening? I mean, what's going on?
That's something that we, we, uh, we need to work with Department of Administration. That's, that's their responsibility to limit those, those uh funds to, to the JMH as well as the other. If you're also concerned with the gaming tax, so that's something that we need to work with them. We, we do all of our, we do however monitor what comes in, but as far as uh them making those uh, uh transfers funds, i- i- it's the, it's DOAs.
But we are, we should be seeing revenue on a monthly basis. And we are.
Yes.
But the remittances you're saying are DOA, is, is DOA remitting to JMH? You're doing your part, you're collecting it, you're putting it into the right place. And they're supposed to make sure that it goes to the hospital.
Though they, they put it in the right place, they put it, we just collect it.
By the way, on the subject of lines, I wanted to give you guys a big thumbs up. Um, I got some Facebook messages about long lines and I was like, what's going on? And it turned out it was a TOG. So um, our Vice, our Vice Speaker here, who is Chairman of uh DOA, has two issues to bring up. One is the hospital remittances from Revantax. And two is the Treasure of Guam line is not keeping up with my Revantax line anymore, Beach. Good job, guys, on, on getting that moving. Um, now we just gotta get that online services thing going and, and we'll get, we'll probably get that customer service thing squared away. But yeah, those three things, um, we'll come back uh Wednesday of next week, ten AM. We'll talk about the auctioning and the dealing on the property tax question. Please figure that one out as much as possible, we'll talk some more before the hearing even and try and, and figure out where we're gonna go. If I need to draft a moratorium piece, I'll, I'll be working on, on that potentially. And hopefully I can convince the Acting Speaker to move that out quickly, if you guys aren't going to be putting a pause on the, on the whole thing. The GRT question and uh, and the online services issue, pretty big. But we did again make progress on the collections and the receivables, so we're moving forward in some areas. We just gotta get over some, some pretty big bumps on some others. But thank you very much for making time this morning. I really appreciate our discussions, we always get into stuff that in the end is, is gonna be good for our people, you know? And uh, these are things that everyone's looking forward to, questions that are on people's minds. But I do want to applaud um both of you for always being very, very upfront and for helping us to uh try and figure out the best way to navigate the services of our people. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and conclude our um oversight hearing at eleven fifty-five this morning. And we will be coming back in and this will be serving as the public notice next week Wednesday at ten AM uh to follow up on those items. It's okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and adjourn, thank you very much.
Thank you.